We've had farm rain in. We put down those eighteen, seventeen acres.
I'm pretty sure that somebody's clock somewhere says seven o'clock. We will open tonight's meeting with the roll call.
Suter.
Here.
Crabtree.
White.
Here.
Mather.
Here.
Elmore.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. An invocation by the Reverend Don Ains.
Let's all bow our heads for prayer. Our kind and gracious heavenly fathers, we come to you this evening. We are so thankful for your many blessings and for the beautiful day that you bestowed upon our community. And father, tonight, as we assemble here to take care of the business at hand, we pray that you just give the leaders that we've elected wisdom, courage, and discernment, father, to be able to make the decisions that are in the best interest of our community. Father, I pray that you just bless them. Thank you for the efforts that they put forth as serving our community, as well as those in the police, fire, and EMS, and all those who get out and serve each and every day. We ask for your protection upon them, father, and that you continue to bless our community, we pray, and ask your blessings upon this meeting tonight, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we move to public comments, and I'll start in the front on the left and work back. Second row.
My name is Howard Fuller, and we've got quite a, we've got a little bit of stuff done this last couple of weeks, and I'm glad to say that we have come to agreement on the Route 66 issue. First of all, the legal opinion on the Route 66 deal, and that was from Chris Allen, is therefore my formal legal opinion as city councilor for the city of Lebanon, Missouri, that subject to the necessary determinations and designations by the Missouri Department of Transportation, that the present Elm Street within the city limits of Lebanon constituting the original U.S. Route 66 pursuant to section 226.792 of the reserve statute of Missouri, and subject to the determination and recommendations by the planning and zoning to the city council, and necessary action by the majority of that elected body, that Elm Street should be then and therefore be renamed Route 66 as a matter of law. Okay, thank you for the legal opinion. We've met with the mayor Anderson, and he has agreed to recognize Elm Street as Route 66 and place all the signs to help tourism, while not wanting to hurt any business, but he also, but he has asked that we dual address the street, which I have agreed to. I think the mayor has tried to be fair on all sides of this issue. There's a, there's a couple of things that I'd like to do now. I'd like to introduce a couple of special guests here tonight. Willem and Monique Boer from the Netherlands. They're sitting right here. Okay. We met them more than five years ago when we were searching for someone who could complete the diorama at the Route 66 museum at the library. Judy Walmart saw the internet post indicating that Willem was constructing scale models of Route 66 icons and sent him an email, followed by pictures and information of, on the Nelson Tavern. He built a scale model that now lives in the diorama and has been friends ever since. They recently, they recently helped to form an official Dutch Route 66 association, so they've joined many other foreign countries that also have Route 66 associations. They returned to Lebanon about three years ago and designated more than, three more scale model buildings, which are also displayed in the Route 66 museum. Welcome back to Lebanon, and, and we sure appreciate you being here. I hope when you return again that we have the Route 66, that's a new and old park. We're gonna, we're gonna have a lot of things in there that's gonna encourage tourism. Thank you so much. Now, another thing that I'd like to do right now is, I would like to recognize two people that were very instrumental in having the law passed at the state level, and that would be Beth Long, she brought it in, and John Russell, he also brought it in. I'd like a big applause for him, okay? Okay, we've made all the agreements and everything, and I think everybody was satisfied on all sides. My first choice was and remains that Elm Street go away and that the street be renamed Route 66, but I am willing now to give the city the chance to do the right by Route 66 and support tourism. I would encourage all businesses to support the use of the Route 66 name as their physical address, and I thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Going back on the left, next row, arms to the back, coming from the back on the right. Anybody over here want to address council? We'll move to discussions and presentations and hear from Reddy.
Check, check, okay. It's working this time. All right. I'm, I've got a timer here. I want to make sure I stay on a, you know, a timeline here. I know we have a lot on the agenda, so. Passed out again, another one of these sheets that, that kind of is an ongoing form to give you guys an update on what projects we're working on, so. I do have a couple different updates in the last four weeks since the last time we visited, so I want to touch base on those. Under recruitment opportunities, both the first two, the Senior Healthcare Entity and the National Restaurant Firm, continue to move forward. Again, on the healthcare, it looks like, should it come to fruition, it would be spring of 2016 when you see anything produced. Right now, they're still in their state permitting form right now, looking to get all that okay, and that should be okayed by the end of this time next month, so hopefully have that result. Spoke to the National Restaurant Firm this morning, and they're continuing to look at Lebanon. They actually came through, did an overview, and have picked out a few potential sites, so looks like that's positive. Added one that wasn't on there last month, a small business that has a couple locations already in the state of Missouri that's strongly looking here, thinks would be a viable location to them, so we're gonna meet next week and take a look and see if there's something that could work out there. Under existing opportunities, I clumped those all together. Those are our current companies that are looking at expansion opportunities, and so actually, an additional one that wasn't on here last month has been added to that list. The investment remains the same, but it should be growing with that other additional one as I find out how much they're looking to invest, so continue to move forward on that. And I'm gonna skip around here and jump to the second page. Under partnerships, I wanted to kind of switch these up. I listed several last month. Well, this month, a few additional ones that I wanted to touch base on. One, during actual last council meeting, a good comment by Councilman Crabtree about what we need to do and take a look at some of the drug issues that are out there and take a stand on those, and so another area that we're looking at as well because it affects all of us, let's be realistic, but participating in the Leclae County Drug Council, attending those meetings, and trying to be actively involved there, whatever programs we can support to help that movement, so obviously, you know, you want to help make our workforce as strong and battle those challenges that we have. Missouri Career Center, Workforce Investment Board, and the Workforce Development through the state, we're working with them. Of course, one of the things here that you've heard before is making Lebanon a work-ready community, and so we're moving toward that. I have about six more months on that program to get us ready, and what that basically does is show companies that we have a workforce that is prepared and ready to meet their needs, should they locate here, or for our existing companies, when they get ready to expand, that they'll have that workforce prepared. Tech 44, as mentioned last month, they're an organization based in Ralla. We had their director down for our last board meeting. She gave a presentation, so we're gonna tie with them and try to, you know, connect our companies with companies along the Interstate 44 corridor, maybe one company has a product that another company could take advantage of, as opposed to, say, going out of state and having to bring that here, and lowers the cost for our existing companies and also helps us, you know, statewide as well. Under public relation activities, still continuing the column in the Lebanon Daily Record on a weekly basis, or excuse me, bi-weekly basis, we've added a Facebook page, Like It, for those of you that, you know, take advantage of the Facebook, Like It on there. We're sharing that column when it comes out, about a week after it's in the paper. 417 News has done some nice posts, shared some links for us as well. The next edition of the actual column in the physical paper will be this coming weekend. Was on the radio with Patty a couple of weeks ago. I thought we had a good discussion about some of the unemployment numbers here. Our rate had came down like 1% from a month ago, and we're about, year-to-year comparison, 2% down from this time a year ago, so that's good news, putting folks to work, and actually, our labor pool is growing, which means there's more people out there working, and we're employing more of those, so that's good news. Also, was interviewed for a Daily Record article on that scenario, and the Welcome to Lebanon magazine that comes out in July, we're gonna have an updated editorial in there and an updated ad as well. Website, additional changes, we've added a link at the top for the column to show after it's been in the paper, about a week after that, it'd go online, and then also, we have a link to the new Facebook page on there as well. Just doing some general updates and maintenance on our local website as well, so. Again, I mentioned the Facebook page. It debuted around June 15th. We have around 43 likes right now, and we'll be doing about three to five posts a week to keep people updated on either things we're doing or things that are important in the community, so. That's a, kind of a quick and dirty on that, but Lebanon, on the back page, you'll see keynote meetings, just kind of go through here, and you'll see a number of meetings we've had since this time about four weeks ago, so. And I could go on all day, a couple things on the workforce aspect, but I know we're kind of, we have a pretty loaded agenda, so.
Any questions or comments?
Sorry, sorry for like a speed reader, but.
Do you seriously believe you can get a work-ready designation in six months?
Yes, we do have a lot of challenges with that. I'll tell you kind of where we are on that. We have two areas to really hit hard in the next six months, and we're working with the team at the state and the regional and the work, Missouri Career Center. We have to get about 23 more employers to be on board to understand what the National Career Designate Certificate is, which is basically an exam that shows that these folks are ready to go to work, they have certain skills, they pass at various levels. The, really, the struggling one we have right now is transitioning workers, which are those that are unemployed looking for work. We've, we've set a goal of 191 test takers, and we're at 40 right now, so we have a pretty long way to go, but we had a meeting last week with the team from the state and our regional partners, and we've kind of got a game plan together to make that happen, so.
That would be wonderful. I've never heard anything that optimistic, and that, I'd give you a Hero of Lebanon Medal if you can do that in six months.
Yes, absolutely, so we, we're gonna, we're gonna set that standard high. We're, we're gonna try, the biggest challenge is the fact that a lot of those unemployed have the numbers at the Career Center, people taking advantage of what they offer, they're not coming through the doors often, so we're gonna try a few different marketing things that we think will work to educate them on why they need to go use those services, number one, but number two, what the test is and how it can work, so. We've got a challenge ahead of us, I'm ready to take it on, so.
Thank you, Brian.
Anybody else, or? Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Seven minutes.
Let's go.
I'll try to be super brief. I know we have a lot on the agenda tonight. Just start off with our budget. Here's a three-year comparison of the budget, where we seem to be entering a period of kind of leveling out. We had some ups and downs in 2013, 2014. The 2015 to date.
Bruce, if you'd pick that mic up, I'd be able to hear you better.
The 2015 to date was actually taken last month, so the expenditures sitting right now look more like the 2015 budgeted, and then we have the 2016 budgeted, which is in this year's budget. Just how our revenues flow in and our expenses flow out, the bulk of our revenue comes from the lodging tax, which is the biggest contributor. It's steadily been increasing by little increments. From 2013 to now, we're up $8,200 in lodging tax. Grant has fluctuated a little bit. They've taken a lot out of the grant as far as production costs and whatnot, and it's true to just marketing advertising dollars, so I'm trying to find ways in the grant that we can go after some more advertising dollars. As far as the expenses go, our largest expense falls, for me, falls under professional services, and that's where all the advertising expense is in my budget. This is just kind of a monthly flow of how revenue comes in and expenses go out. We get two really big bumps during the year. September is when we get the fourth quarter from the previous year from the grant reimbursement, which is our largest chunk over the four quarters, and then we get the interfund transfer at the end of the year. Our two biggest months for expenditures is December, it's when we're preparing for all of our trade shows, so all of our expenditures go up when I start ordering things for the trade shows, and then in April, really, when all of our advertising kind of kicks off and all of our marketing efforts kick off. And as far as advertising, this is the cost breakdown, as far as print, digital billboards, and television, which is our marketing mix, the largest being print, but it's also where we get the most. Along with a lot of the print advertising that we have, we get a lot of extras. You take out four ads in one magazine, and they'll send out two e-blasts for free over the course of the year, or they'll run a banner on their website, or they'll give you a Facebook post, so we get a lot of extra with our print. As far as our reach, for what we pay, our reach is phenomenal. I mean, our estimated reach for, we spend about $35,000 on print, we can reach an estimated 3 million people, so it's kind of the numbers you're dealing with. I did not put billboards in advertising reach because those numbers are aggregated on how many people would pass a billboard, and it's upwards of like 71 million for the year, so that just makes all those little pieces really, really tiny in comparison, so. Every year, we run a lead generator campaign. The lead generator campaign is run through one of our advertising partners. It's tied in with social media, and basically what it does is it just, it helps to generate interest, and then that interest flows back to us in the form of fulfillment, whether it be electronic or physical fulfillment. An instance of physical fulfillment would be like sending them a visitor's guide because they're showing interest. When we, all these leads that we generate throughout the year, they're all opt-in, so we're then eligible to use them for whatever we'd like to use them for, and later on, when I talk about the survey, you'll see what I use them for. This is just a chart of where I can see where our interest is coming from over the years, and if we're maintaining interest in an area or if it's going down, and then I can really kind of go in and target that area depending on what they're looking for. And I'm really happy to say that a lot of people in Missouri really kind of take note of Lebanon, that's our biggest interest area. So, all of our advertising has a call of action. A call of action would be a telephone number, a website, Facebook page. We use Lebanonmo.org as our call to action and everything. It's really simple, kind of straightforward, easy to understand, so we can drive traffic to here, which is our website. We have a special landing page on this website, so I can kind of get better aggregated data as to who's coming and where they're coming from, and then I can follow them from here to see what they're looking at. Currently, people that are coming to our website in this order, they're interested in Bennett Springs, Route 66, shopping, and then dining, and lodging's at the end. I feel like lodging's at the end most likely because people, they go to other travel websites like Expedia and whatnot when they're looking for a hotel, or they may go directly to the hotel's website, so that's not a main point of traffic for us. Other digital components is our social media. I, I'm a huge fan and a proponent of social media, and our lead generator campaign is tied into our social media. For instance, our Facebook page just three years ago had about 1,000 likes, and in three years, we're up to 8,500, and that's all generated through this campaign that we run every year. I'm hoping to break 9,000 by the end of the year, but that just extends my reach. For every post, I get that many people plus everyone they're connected to, so that really helps me out. But their in-user analytics is what really is, I'm starting to pay attention to. I can really see like what our demographic is, and how it's hitting, and who it's hitting, and where they're located, and a breakdown. I'm sorry that it's very light. Facebook won't let me change their colors, I don't know why. But this is kind of a breakdown of like reach, and you can see that for the post during this time, I was reaching 65% of our audience, which made the re, let me have it explain. 69% of that total number are our fans. 65% of that number I was reaching, so I was reaching 65% of our fans continuously, and that is only, you know, there's still 30% more people that were paying attention to our post that are not fans yet, but I'm working on. Twitter has the same in-user analytics. Twitter's not a really good social media for the area. I kind of started to kind of test it out and see what would happen, and we've had it for a couple of years, it really didn't go anywhere. When I took this job about a year ago, we were hovering around 95 followers, so what I did was I called up my counterpart at the state, and I said, I, how, what do I do? I want to get more people, and they actually sent me the process to get our page verified, so we are verified through Twitter, and you can see in the graph how we've steeply inclined ever since that verification process has happened. We went from 90 last May, we're almost 500 today, so it's been successful, successful. Also, you can see that even though I am only sitting about 500 followers, I'm making about 171 impressions per day, so that's a very positive thing. When you look at it in a 28-day period, that's 4.9 thousand impressions. So this is the visitor survey where I told you I'd explain the lead opt-in. I might have to read a little bit of this because there's a lot of numbers. So, for the past three years, we've participated in a survey with our partner, H2R Market Research. We supply them with the leads that we get, all the leads that have email addresses attached to them. I make a list, I chop out all the personal information, I send the location, the email address, and I think it's a last name, and they generate from that a survey, which then they email to the people. So last year, I think they emailed out about 6,000 emails with the survey, and based on their responses, these are some of the things that were generated from the responses. Marketing campaign generated a return on investment of just over $12, an increase from 2013, and a historical high for the Lebanon area. The campaign generated nearly 6,000 inquiries to the CVV and produced more than 615,000 gross revenue. Now, this is just a subsection of, these are people that are interested. This is not a full picture of what's actually going on, it's just kind of a gauge, like a barometer, so I can kind of gauge what's going on. Tourism spending per party is up roughly $239, which is also a historical high. In the last year, we've seen increased visitation and increased spending to the area per party. And as far as the effectiveness of the advertising campaign, approximately two-thirds of Lebanon visitors recalled seeing the print advertisements, out of everybody that responded. It's a 15% increase from 2013, and the majority of the respondents believed the advertising was easy to understand, believable, and fit what they thought of Lebanon, so when they got here, there were no surprises. The advertising reflected what they were gonna see, and when they got here, they got what they saw. This is a really great way, this visitor survey, of really gauging what's going on. Unfortunately, the more I learn, the more I realize it's, we need to do something else, and I'm gonna propose to my board in the upcoming months that we do a multi-year visitor profile study, which would include a more in-depth questionnaire that we leave at places like hotels, restaurants, so people that are visiting our area can fill this out, they can get the card back to me by leaving it there, and I'll just go pick them up, and we can kind of really start aggregating this data more correctly. So what's ahead? In the upcoming months, I'll be working on the advertising for the upcoming year, refreshing the visitor's guide, working on a new commercial, the 2016 calendar, working to increase our digital presence. Although we don't want to alienate our print ad because we get so much out of it, we really need to really figure out a way that we can increase our digital presence, because that's the way it's going. Apps and websites and click-throughs and Google AdWords and all that has to be worked on, it's not something that we've participated in yet up to this point. And then, like I said, a multi-year profile study. That's my, that concludes my presentation. Any questions? I know the report was a lot more in-depth than what I just did, but I knew we were kind of struggling on time tonight, so.
In your billboards, how many billboards?
We currently have three billboards.
What do you have?
Lebanon. Well, we have, we kind of have like a slogan that we put with our billboards that says, play, stay, play, shop, play, dine, stay, find your getaway in Lebanon, Missouri, is kind of what we're going with.
Are they Brumley?
Yes, that's, we do have a Brumley billboard. The two that advertise Lebanon, though, are co-opted through the state, and they're further out, so we wouldn't be able to advertise something like Brumley, because you have to, in any of the advertising that's done through the cooperative marketing grant, you have to do multiple events.
What kind of magazines do you have?
We, I have a list.
How much money do you spend on magazines?
Around 35,000, between 35,000 and $40,000.
And why do you advertise there?
It depends on the magazine.
Just Lebanon?
Well, it depends on the magazine. Although the key message for any of our advertisement is to get them to the Lebanon-Leclae area, depending on the magazine, for instance, American Road, it wouldn't really work to advertise something like the thrills you get at Bennett. For American Road, we tend more towards the Route 66. Show Me Missouri would be like a mixture, because you're hitting kind of a geographical mixture of people, so you flip back between like all of our attractions, whether it be a floating trip, or Route 66, or the park. The report too will be available online. I'll have my IT person put it in the document center, so all the information in more depth you can go through.
Is there any more advertising?
We're always looking for more ways to create advertising. I'm hoping that with our digital presence that I would really be able to push Route 66, and I do, when things pop up on Route 66, I do push them out through our social media. For instance, the flags that will be lining, I haven't, wasn't in the office today, but I plan on doing a post about the flags. Anything else?
Next item on the agenda is an appointment to the Board of Adjustment. You've received a resume for a gentleman that I proposed to nominate, and that name is Lena?
Jane Luenzer.
Get her roll call.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
And we move to approval of amendments. We have several amendments to approve, and some of us missed some of them, so be alert. We have several amendments to approve and some of us missed some of them, so be alert.
The only meeting that I have noted that a councilman person was absent was on the May 26th, when Councilman Mather was absent. So all the other ones we can vote on together and then we can do a separate voting if you want to abstain from that.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Now, the May 26th.
Motion to approve. Second.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather abstaining. Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
And approval of warrants. Is there any specific warrant you'd like information about?
Yeah, I had a question. Page five, the refund, every two of them refund 90.
When we were doing our ending balances and there are some accounts, some city utility accounts that were high for misreading or for whatever reason. And normally, if I feel that we can credit the account and it'll be paid back in a year's time period, then I really didn't worry about it. But one of them was a street light or a signal, a signal that was $6,000. It normally has a $30 to $40 monthly bill. So I basically just had them refund that back so that people are counting straight. So, but it just shows you that we do all of our accounts manage just like every other account. So this is just where we had a misreading. That's what it is.
Motion to approve.
Second.
My other question.
Sorry. That's all right.
Well, and I know Kathy was expecting it. Every month that it comes up, I'm going to bring it up. Page 35, the gym. And I know she's working on it, so I'm going to give her time. But I just want to keep it out there in the, in our minds that there's some inequality going on.
We are working to address that, Miss Herny, like I did last week.
Yep, that's what I was saying.
I'm hoping to have a complete analysis of that for that program within the next four weeks and recommendations to change the program that will provide that, that, to ensure that the program is active over time.
And I guess some of my question might be if, if we're paying for one, but we're not paying for other people to go to other locales, we've just chosen one, which is fine as long as it was bid out. But I also noticed people pay for the Y and don't get a discount on that. Just to keep it out there.
And we are looking at bidding out those services and not having multiple gyms. If that is something that we are looking to continue to bid up those services along with other services to do those out to streamline our processes.
Just keeping it in the forefront. Thank you.
Any other questions with regards to specific warrants? We have a motion and a second.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Your package includes the May Treasurer's Report. Any questions? Move to be received.
Second.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Now it's time to consider our just concluded or just concluding budget. And we're going to move into public hearing to hear a discussion of the reconciliation for the 15 budget and a presentation with regard to the 16 budget.
Motion to throw into public hearing.
Second.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Let's start with the reconciliation. Ms. Gill, you want to?
She's passed that to me, so I'll do, she's still working.
Kicked it downstream.
Yeah, she did kick it. No, you know, every year, I do, I do amendments to the budget at the end of the year. We kind of keep track of all the pluses and minuses. And this kind of trues everything out before the year. And so as you can see, we basically amend the appropriations by a million and four. So that's a million and four that is in our budget that did not get spent. So we've produced those appropriations. We might have had high spots elsewhere to cover that. So the bottom line is, it's a net of a savings of a million and four for this year's budget. So that's what it is. And this will essentially be the amended budget that will go into our audit. And it will show, and realign all the numbers to work out to accuracy. Any questions with that from anybody?
Yeah, on page four. The community development, the capital expenditure, just tell me what it is. 52,640.
Thank you. South, okay. That's why people suffer. So that was South, that was South Dale improvements that started to trickle in for the redevelopment of the South Dale subdivision. And so the 52 is the expenditure. Because remember, all of our subdivision, sure. So I'm going to make a broad statement. When you see a capital expenditure out of 50, that's our subdivision development. So that's where, and now that subdivision activity is picking back up, you're going to see that. So like where the school is going to be expensed, those are all expensed through our subdivision program. And I'm holding those expenditures in fund 50 versus the utilities and convenience. So whether it be Triple G or South Dale School, anytime that there's wrinkle, anytime there's expenditure, so you should see the offsetting revenue. So this is activity that occurred in this fiscal year related to that.
That we didn't budget for.
Sure, sure. But this year, we have budgeted for some, but we still don't know what will come up throughout the year. So, I mean, it's always an estimate on that. But hopefully, dollar for dollar, we see a reimbursement.
And I'm going to assume that the adjustment in the airport was just in the changeover and all of that.
Yes, that is correct. That is, obviously, we did not budget July 14 that we'd be taking back over the airport. We have, as there existed, so that all that activity is reflected. Any other questions for that? Okay, enough of the budget. And this is the, so, page 30. And so this is the essentially amended budget. So if you recall our process, I have submitted to this council and the community as a whole for its part of May, a budget that is staff recommendations. We went through that over a series of work sessions. This council made decisions. And so the budget that is for consideration this evening is the budget that you guys essentially amended and put forward. So for the community's purpose, I will kind of summarize the overall budget. And the plan is, is upon adoption, we will print about 25, 26 copies. You'll all get a copy. There'll be one at the library, clerk's office, and then I'm going to make sure all the staff, all the senior staff have it, so it's a document that we can live and breathe in. So, but on page 29, if you brought your draft, there are some changes to reflect your activity, but it's also up on the screen for you to follow along. Bottom line is, we have $17 million that we feel will be available for appropriations. Obviously, the Treasury report shows 19 this year, or this last month, June activity plus restricted funds. We feel that there's about 17 million that's available for appropriations. We have 48 million that we anticipate in revenue. And we are appropriating $54,675,677, giving you an ending balance of about 13 million. We have, if you, one of the things that I am continuing to stress, and I've broken down the budget overview on page 39, is our buckets. We have governmental fund, we have special funds, we have internal funds, and we have enterprise funds. And each one of those kind of look, we wear different hats and we expend those monies differently. And those are well organized in the budget overview. Page 42 is one of the things that I also like to do is sort of look at a top line of where are we in terms of the individual funds. So as you can see, the general fund is going to start with about 1.7 and end about 1.3. There is significant investment in capital in there. Street fund is going to start with about a million for appropriations and end about a half a million. And capital is going to start with 778 and end with a 304. One of the goals that we had talked about was a continuous investment in things that the tax preparers want us to see. And this year, we did it through the civic center, police department, some fire, and this budget reflects, and that's what we did in 15, that's what the budget sort of reflects in 16 also. One of the things that, as it's been noted, we want to continue to focus on fund balance is so that we can kind of, kind of keep them in there, each fund having its own fund balance so that we're not looking at the aggregate, so that everything kind of stands on its own. One of the good news is, is we actually got our, since our last work session, we got our June receipts for sales tax. And on the draft budget, we estimated a 15% fund balance. We were kind of sales tax that we are now estimating a 20% fund balance at the end just because of how much increase in sales tax we got in, in June. So that's a very good number. So if you notice, on the new one, I've got, put in the box, general, and I'll just kind of go through the rest of these, but general is 20, street is 15, capital is 19. For page 43. Tourism is running about 35% fund balance, economic development 10. Airport, got some challenges, still at negative 14. That's something we need to be addressing over the next couple of years. Downtown business uses their funds predominantly for capital investment. And so they're holding 100% fund balance, but they save for a big project and then they'll look to spend those. So that's not uncommon. It's the exact same with parks. As you guys are aware, in 2015, the parks received a large proceed and that is reflected in their fund balance now. And that will predominantly be used for capital investment. As I said, community development, internal, the special internal, or the internal funds, community development has a 26% fund balance. Again, some of that is, that helps us manage the subdivision activity. So as that subdivision activity increases or decreases, that gives you capacity to expense those. Internal Services does not hold a fund balance because it is a break even. And then benefits, we're setting at 20% fund balance. So again, over the years, I think we've continued to work for that. And I think we're finally getting to a point that we can be happy and know that we'll reach our goal eventually. The one note I have to say, have to say, the electric fund, this is a budget that does articulate a fund balance of 29%, which is 1% lower than that's in our code. So I do want to note that. I think we're all very aware of our situation, but I do want to note that so that we know that we're doing it on purpose.
And that's cash?
Hmm?
That's cash? That doesn't include the receivables from the loan?
That's correct. That's correct. Fiber is at 218. Again, it's a smaller number, so higher percentage. And I think there is some discussion about purchasing a piece of equipment out of that in the next couple of years. And I think that that would be a good use for those funds. Waste water and water are set in 27 and 22 respectfully. We probably should in the next fiscal year or so, or during this fiscal year, start looking at potential rate increases for water and sewer to be effective in FY '17. So we do have some large wastewater improvements coming up. So that's something we need to probably start talking about now so that it's come FY '17, that's something that we can look at for that much. So with that, I will conclude. It is, like I said, a good document. It is very informative for the citizen if they would like to review it. And if they'd like to ask me any questions, I'll take them now and, or anytime during the year. If there's any other questions, counsel.
Is there anybody out there that would like to comment on this budget? It's been out in the public for close to two months now. It's been available on the website. And if you're interested, you've had an opportunity to familiarize yourself with it. Any comments, questions, observations? Counsel.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
You want to?
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Council Bill 4098 is now passed and is ordinance 5349. Now we move to first and second readings, and the first five of which are replats. And we'll take them one at a time, and you can address them all. Champion Express subdivision.
This is at the corner of East Bland and South Jefferson. It's owned by Evergreen Enterprise. They're going to do some demo work and add some more.
Some what work?
Demo. They're going to get rid of two buildings and then add some more gas pumps. That's the plan right now.
Motion to approve.
Second. Council Bill 4098 is now passed and is ordinance 5349. Now we move to first and second readings, and the first five of which are replats. And we'll take them one at a time. And you can address them all. Champion Express Subdivision.
This is at the corner of East Bland and South Jefferson. It's owned by Evergreen Enterprise. They're going to do some demo work and add some more.
Some what work?
Demo. They're going to get rid of two buildings and then add some more gas pumps. That's the plan right now.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Move on second.
Second to second.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Hurney.
Council Bill 4099 is now passed and is ordinance 5350. Council Bill 4100 is the final plat at Castle Rock Estates, Phase 3.
This is about a 10-acre tract. That's on the east side of Castle Rock Estates, the subdivision that's already there. And they're dividing it into three lots, be Phase 3.
Motion to approve.
I have a question. Is there any chance that there's any water situation like we've had before out there? The water district things that we went through once before, is that all settled?
Yep.
Yep.
That's all.
Second. Second, uh, second to motion. Second to second. First to first, whatever.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Move on second.
Second to second.
I think yes, first to.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes. I said yes.
Okay. Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Council Bill 4100 is approved and is ordinance 5351. Council Bill 4101 is final plat, Thomas Subdivision.
This is a small tract of land out on Windsor Drive on the west side of town. And what he's doing, he's got two houses on that tract and he's splitting it up and going to sell one house off of it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Move on second.
Second to second.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Council Bill 4101 is approved and becomes ordinance 5352. Council Bill 4102 is the final plat for the White Hat Subdivision.
This is Graven Motors, old Hugh Palmer Motors. They purchased a tract of land to the north of them. And they're just plating it into one lot. And they're going to do some future expansion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Move on second.
Second to second.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Council Bill 4102 is approved and is now ordinance, uh, yeah, ordinance 5353. Council Bill 4103 deals with the final plat for lots 48 and 49 in Carriage Hills and lots 15 and 16 in Carriage Hills Annex.
This is, uh, two subdivisions came together and they left some little remnant of land behind, about four lots. There really is more than that, but, and leaving remnants of land in a subdivision is against our code. So they're plating it and joining it with the lots existing. Instead of being two parcels, it'll be one tract of land. And that's on, it's just on four lots.
Second.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Move on second.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
We have the group health renewal. And what we'd like to do is review the numbers and look at it. If this is a look in history, you can see it goes from 2006 through 2014. You'll see in 2011, 2012, we had a little over $2 million in costs there for the health insurance. This year, for 2014, the year, it's actually 2014, 15, the year that we're getting ready to end. We don't have the actual numbers because that policy period has not ended yet. But we expect that to be somewhere around a million dollars. So has greatly improved, as you can see. If we turn to the next page there, you can see that we've done, and some people would say maybe we've been lucky. I'm a big believer that you make your own luck for the most part. And that's what we've done here. We've taken some proactive measures. We've had a wellness program that's been greatly accepted. If you'll remember when I was here a few weeks ago, we talked about work comp and how the improvement there and the lower premium. That's because of not only wellness, but safety. And both those things have a big part in controlling cost. People, it's, it's all a win-win situation there, that our claims are less, our cost is less, we're more productive, we're happier. It's, like I said, it's a win-win situation there. And they're to be commended for those programs. We started the renewal process back in mid-April. We sent out requests for quotes to multiple carriers, a lot of different carriers. We met with the city staff and began to review and analyze those quotes after we received the quotes in. On the renewal process, when we look at that, there are three major components to a self-funded health insurance plan. The first one is the administrative cost. That's the cost we pay to a third-party administrator to administer claims, to act like the insurance company, to pay the claims, to make sure they're legitimate, to follow up on those, to do all those type things. The biggest cost is claim funding, that money which is used to actually pay the claims. And that's the biggest part of it. And then we have the reinsurance cost. So there's, there's two actually portions of that that we'll look at here in a little bit. But there is a specific, which is the maximum amount that we would pay on any one person in one policy period. And then there's what we call an aggregate, was, which is the amount that if everyone got sick, the maximum that we would pay for the whole group. So we buy reinsurance for those to minimize our costs there. Again, like I said, we, we send it out to a lot of different carriers. AIG gave us a quote. They're the world's largest. Un-American, which is a division of United Health Group. And all these carriers, by the way, are rated. United Health Group is a huge, huge carrier. HCC Life, which has been doing it for more than 30 years and does a tremendous amount of business in Ace America, which again is one of the largest in the world. So they all came back with quotes. We had other people that said, well, we will not be competitive. So there's no use in giving you a quote. But this is what a renewal looks like here. By the way, on the provider network, we're using Etna. And their discounts, we used to be with Health Link. And the discounts we see here considerably more, they're deeper. You know, for any of you that's had health insurance claims, you'll see the billed amount and then the allowed amount. And sometimes there are huge differences between those two figures. And that comes into play with, with that provider network. The discounts that we get, the Etna network uses mainly the Mercy Network here. The Mercy Network here in Lebanon, Mercy Network in Springfield, and of course, there's all over the country, there's other ones. I, I mentioned specific. That's our maximum exposure on any one person in any one policy period is $70,000. That is, the larger group you are, the bigger that figure will be. You know, so if you had 1,000 employees, that figure may be 150,000, maybe 200,000. So we look at the numbers and pick what we, what we think the best figure is. You can look at the admin fees. They went up 2% from 77,000 to 79,000. Our fee stayed the same. The reinsurance contribution, that, that part of it is what we call the aggregate, the, the reinsurance cost for the group as a whole. And then the other reinsurance premium is what we call the specific. The, the reinsurance we get for any one person when their claims go over $70,000. So you can see that went up 5%. The expected claims, we expect to be down 1%. And the maximum claims, we expect to be down 1%. So overall, the total expected cost, basically, we think those are going to be flat. And the maximum cost, if everyone got sick, is going to be down $5,000. So basically, again, flat. So good numbers here. That's not what, every day I talk about health insurance with some group, with individuals, and that's not the norm. All you got to do is turn the TV on, read the newspaper. Rate increases are rampant, so. We also did renegotiate a contract with Script World that we get our discounts from for the prescriptions. And we estimate that we'll get about a $40,000 savings from renegotiating that contract. Plan design changes under the Affordable Care Act. It requires employers to offer health insurance as affordable and provide minimum value to their full-time employees and their children up to age 26, or be subject to penalties. So that language has been added. And it also has an out-of-pocket maximum, which now includes all co-payments. Those include deductibles, office visit co-payments, drug co-payments, all of those things come under that maximum out-of-pocket. Where before, those co-payments did not. So we're suggesting that we increase that maximum out-of-pocket by $500, which is a very minor increase, especially when you determine that all those co-pays fall under that now. So. So our recommendation is HCC Life Insurance Company gave us the best reinsurance quote. Maritame Health, our third-party administrator, has done a very good job for us. And Script World, again, like I said, we renegotiated those contracts and got a savings there. So that's what we're suggesting. So our current plan will be enforced until June 30th. And then these new ones will take over July 1st and run for the next 12 months. Any questions? Again, I really want to say that the wellness program, the safety programs have made a big, big, huge difference in controlling these costs. And that's, they've, they've done a good job with that. And, and, you know, and like I said, I mean, you look back at 2011, 2012, there's a million dollars worth of difference there.
If we have no questions, could I have a motion with regard to adoption of this program?
Are we, just three different?
Three. I understand that. And we're talking about 4104.
Most approved.
Second.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Move on to second.
Second to second.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Council Bill 4104 is adopted and is now ordinance 5355. Now we can move 4105 through the.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Move on second.
Second to second.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Council Bill 4105 is approved and becomes ordinance 5356. We move to Council Bill 4106, which is Script World.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Move on to second.
Second.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Council Bill 4106 is approved and ordinance 5357. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Now we move to Council Bill 4107, which deals with insertion of advertising. And you have information with regard to this in your package. Could I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Move on to second.
Second to second.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Counsel Bill 4107 is approved and is now ordinance 5358. Counsel Bill 4108, grant agreement for downtown business history.
Ben. This is the grant application to remove all the ash trees downtown and replace them. We worked with Lebanon Arbor Care to select two different varieties of tree. One is a dogwood variety, the other's a crabapple variety. They'll both stay smaller, they're flowering, they've got much smaller canopy than the current trees. And if we don't get this grant off chance, we do have enough money in the budget to pay for it outright, so we're not dependent on it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Move on to second. Second, second.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Move on to second.
Second to second.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Move on to second.
Second to second.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Thank you, Ben. Counsel Bill 4108 is approved and becomes ordinance 5359. Counsel Bill 4109 accepts the amended 15 budget. Most approved.
Second.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes. Thank you, Ben.
Counsel Bill 4108 is approved and becomes ordinance 5359. Counsel Bill 4109 accepts the amended 15 budget. Most approved.
Second.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Thank you, Ben. And one more, we're working on this as of yesterday. Or Friday.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
No.
I'm... I would like to add to the record. The last three budgets have totaled in excess of $15,500,000 of expenses over revenues. And I do not believe that this council and this administration is doing an acceptable job of prioritizing our expenses. For that reason, I cannot support this budget. Further, I would state that our four main operating accounts are some 1.9 points... Excuse me, $1,970,000 under where they should be for prudent operating rules. And I can't accept it.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
No.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
No.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Thank you, Ben. Counsel Bill 4108 is approved and becomes ordinance 5359. Counsel Bill 4109 accepts the amended 15 budget. Most approved.
Second.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Move on to second.
Second to second.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
4109 is approved and is now ordinance 5360. Counsel Bill 4110 deals with acceptance of the 16 budget. Most approved.
Second.
I do want to take a second to just thank all of the staff, I think, over the last couple of years, especially as the document has grown with information, your staff has really stepped up, provided really good substantive material, and I think the budget and CIP continues to get stronger and stronger. And I know Kat and her department, especially the long, long hours to get the product that you see before you, so I want to personally thank them and all of the senior department heads and staff that they rely on to provide all these numbers.
And Kat and Holly were working on this as of yesterday. Or Friday.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
No.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
No.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
No.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Move on to second.
Second to second.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?